Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, May 7, 2025 at 7:01 PM at the Downers Grove Civic Center. Melissa, will you please go?
Member Bernard.
Here.
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis.
Here.
Member Hannah.
Here.
Member Olchik.
Here.
Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hughes. Here. All right, first up on our agenda tonight is approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in your packet of materials? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 14, 2025 meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried to approve the minutes of the April 14, 2025 meeting as presented. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 14, 2025 closed session meeting as presented and keep them closed to the public due to their confidential nature of their contents?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried to approve the minutes of the April 14, 2025 closed session meeting as presented and keep them closed to the public. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 2, 2025 Board Orientation as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried to approve the minutes, the May 2, 2025 Board Orientation as presented. Next up, we have the Declaration of Election Results. Based on the information received from the DuPage County Election Commission, the results of the election held on April 1, 2025 declare that the following candidates elected to their representative offices as members of the Board of Education of the Downers Grove Grade School District Number 58 to serve for four years. Darren Hughes, Katie Thomas, Melissa Ellis, Nicole Bernard. At this time, I would like to welcome all of the newly-elected Board members up to the podium and welcome Vice President Doshi to lead them in the oath of office.
Yeah, we'll do one at a time. So Darren, you'll go first. All right, I'll read the first paragraph for you and then you can repeat it after me. "I, Darren Hughes, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office a member of the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
"I, Darren Hughes, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as a member of the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
Now, could you please read the affirmations directly below that?
"I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that board members have no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by the majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As a part of the board education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education for every student in the district. I shall foster the board extensive participation in the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as the educator's key advocate on behalf of the students and our community's school to advance the vision of Downers Grove Grade School District 58, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board, fostering excellence for every student in areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development."
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Katie Thomas? Please repeat after me. "I, Katie Thomas, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member of the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
"I, Katie Thomas, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member of Board of Education of Downers Grove School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
All right, now please read the affirmations directly below that.
"I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can only be made by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by the majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for the Downers Grove Grade School District 58. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of the students and our community schools to advance the vision of Downers Grove Grade School District 58. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development."
Thank you, Katie. Melissa?
Bring a reason up.
You'll repeat after me, please. "I, Melissa Ellis, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member of the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
"I, Melissa Ellis, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
Please read the affirmations directly below that.
You got it. "I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Downers Grove Grade School Districts 58. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community's schools to advance the vision for Downers Grove Grade School District 58. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board as created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development."
Thank you, Melissa. Nicole?
Remember this?
Almost memorized.
Please repeat after me. "I, Nicole Bernard, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
"I, Nicole Bernard, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
"I, Nicole Bernard, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Downers Grove Grade School District 58 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability."
Please read the affirmations directly below that.
"I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Downers Grove Grade School District 58. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community's school to advance the vision for Downers Grove Grade School District 58. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development."
Nicole.
And to all newly-elected, congratulations. Welcome to the board. At this time, I welcome each and every one of you to walk up to the podium or make a public comment if you'd like. Any interested in making a comment as a new board member? Please.
"I am thrilled to be able to serve my community in this way, and I am looking forward to working with all of you and helping 58 continue to grow and make sure that it serves the needs of our community and each and every one of our students. Thank you."
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Just wanted to say welcome. Thank you, and I'm thrilled to be here and elected for the four-year term. This is a great group of leaders, of advocates, proud to be part of it, proud to be part of the community, look forward to this opportunity greatly, but Tracy in particular, I wanted to say a sincere thank you. Since my appointment, you've been supportive. I think on day one, you came over and introduced yourself, offered any help and support. We heard your husband's outstanding comments last meeting. It was truly impressive, and the notes on the table. You leave big shoes to fill, and I really wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, that brings us onto the recognition of our departing board members. At this time, we would like to recognize our departing board members, Tracy Weiner and Greg Harris, for their services to District 58. We are going to give you a departing gift, but I wanted to have an opportunity first to say a couple of words and then give the board an opportunity to say a few words as well. I'll start with Dr. Gregory Harris. I've already kind of said my departing words for you, but you weren't here, so I just wanted to take a quick moment and say once again, thank you. The eight years that we served together really showed to be an incredible time of growth in this district, and I can't imagine it being such a smooth process had you not been a part of it. So I really wanted to, while you were in the room, wanted to say thank you for all the time that you put on the board. Tracy, it's gonna be weird not having you here, for sure, because while it's been six years on the board, it's not like you haven't been omnipresent in the district well beyond that. If you could, if they're still out there somewhere, the old audio tapes before the board broadcast in video, you'll hear you, you know, giving speeches, you'll hear your laugh in the background, you know, so you were always here, always advocating, whether it was in your school directly, standing in front of the board, or being here on the board. You have shared with us a perspective. Your kids were always a little bit older than mine, so it was, it was always fun to hear like, okay, this is what middle school's gonna look like, and these are the challenges we gotta start working on. So we've been really, really proud of the work that you've done. It didn't hit me until election night when the results were coming in and you texted me, and then I was like, oh, you're not gonna be here anymore, and you know, and so you're leaving a hole here and you're gonna be greatly missed, and I just want to thank you for the incredibly hard work that you've put in over the last six and more like 20 years probably, in reality. So everybody owes you a debt of gratitude in this district, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to make any comments tonight?
Pretty simple ones from me. Four years ago, I came in on the heels of COVID, and this board was strong and confident and war beaten and dedicated still. So Greg and Tracy, honor to carry on the legacy that you guys began with this board. Looking forward to welcoming in our new board members to carry it on too. So short tenure I had with you, but I'm really glad that I did because I learned a lot.
Thank you.
I'll miss your brownies. At 10 o'clock at night.
I can go next. First, Greg, you were my elbow partner for six years, and because of you, I got the bad chair at the previous village hall. But I was, you were the person that I could lean next to and say, I don't know what's going on here, can you tell me what we're doing? And you were the one that would always provide guidance and extremely valuable thoughts for me, especially when I was new. And so thank you. You're gonna be a few seats away going forward, but I will still be pinging you for thoughts and advice. Tracy, there are, I can count the number of meetings that, as a board member or previous to being a board member, where I was at and you were not at. Before I joined, I tried to come to a lot of board meetings just to get a feel for what the school board was like, and you were at each one of those. And that's where I first got to know you, and if there's something that comes to mind for me, it's the definition of productive advocacy. The way in which you cared yourself, the way in which you approached it was always based on, first, grounded in the foundation of what's best for our students, and then second, backing it up with facts and meaningful, meaningful thought, well-thought-out arguments. And so when you were about to join the board, I knew that we'd have somebody coming on that was going to think differently than I think the way that I think, and that's exactly what I want on our board, is folks that think differently but work really well together. And in the six years that you and I have served together, it's been nothing but that. And so we're going to miss you for sure, but we know that you've shown us a path forward that we hope to carry forward and make you proud.
Thank you. Yeah, so Greg, eight years is such a long time to dedicate to board, and it's really impressive, and I think the areas where you have so much strength are areas that I have very little strength, and so I leaned on you a lot with questions on those types of things, and I'm glad that you're gonna still be here in a different capacity, be able to continue to provide that expertise that I definitely don't have even after all this time on the board. Still learning. So I really thank you, and I'm looking forward to working with you continued in this different capacity. It's great. Tracy, you and I got into this together, and that was a wild ride in itself, and like everyone has kind of said, even before the six years that you've been on the board, you were a staple. I'm sure administrators who've been here for a long time can remember when Tracy's walking up to the podium and they're like, oh, boy. So everyone has said advocacy, you know, all those things, it's huge. I remember back before I was on the board, when you were the one who was the voice to the parents and the community, saying, here's what's going on, here's what happened at the board meeting last night, so that everyone could be involved and engaged, and that was hugely important to the community as a whole. There's no one who's more engaged than you, no one. You're never afraid to ask a question, you're never afraid to say, I don't understand what this is about, and that's not always easy to do, and always putting kids first. The list goes on and on. We're gonna miss you for sure. You're gonna be a void 100%. Thanks. Thank you.
All right, well, Greg, I actually didn't prepare anything for you because I think of you still being there, which I think is awesome, and I think it's a testament to how much I enjoyed working with you for almost eight years and even a little bit before that. So really looking forward to that partnership, especially Friday mornings at 7:00 AM with the FAC, so we're gonna keep that party going. But when I kind of put my thoughts together about Tracy, the one word that kind of came to me with each and every thought is just how important Tracy is. So first of all, to me, we all need people to keep us in check, those who let us know when we're out of line or when we start to veer off track, or let us know that we need to be open to other people's perspectives. So selfishly, for me, that person for the last six years has been Tracy. So first, thank you for always sharing your candid feedback each step of the way. Important to the team. So two things really stand out about Tracy being a tremendous member of the DG 58 team. First is just the amount of effort that she puts forward to educate herself on topics. There's been times where I'm like, how did you know that? And she'd be like, oh, I talked to this person in this district, my friend in this district, I read this, and then I reached back to so-and-so. There's been so many times where I've just been thoroughly impressed with the amount of effort that she put into this volunteer position. The second thing that's really important to the team is just her ability to keep us on task. I think in larger teams, sometimes you get a lot of talkers, I'm not gonna name any names. But Tracy was always there to respectfully, and I underline respectfully, kind of challenged us to either wrap it up or be clear on what the next steps were and kind of make sure that we were efficient with our time, so thank you for that. So that's gonna be a very large gap in itself, so I'll do my best to think, what would Tracy do in that situation? Important to the community, you know, I guess, you know, this has been said several times, but I recall when I first started going to meetings about seven years ago, that I kept thinking, who is this Tracy Weiner person, and why is she talking again? But, you know, you know, fast forward a short time after that, my perceptions changed drastically. I think your, is Doug still here? Yeah, he's here. So it was about a month ago, he was standing up here, he said, you know, she's someone that will step in and do something, right? And I think that can't be underestimated. Out of all the wonderful things you've done over the years for the district, that's the one thing I want people to remember, is Tracy Weiner is someone who will step in and do something. So I'm grateful that there's awesome people like you in Downers Grove who will step in and do something when they see an opportunity. And finally, importance as a friend, I'm happy to have you as my board buddy for the last six years. We've had some good laughs, even some good eye rolls, and I think the one thing is some pretty damn solid results for the district, so I think that's something you should be very proud of. But I'm happy to call you my friend, and we will miss you, so.
Thank you.
So that's all I have to say. But Greg, you're sticking around.
Do I get to say something?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you can do it right now.
Okay, well, I prepared something because I don't do things off the cuff, so, and I will do my best to get through this. It's been a long one. I just want to take a moment to say what a true honor and total adventure it's been to serve this community, the district and board for the last six years. I started out 10 years ago being curious, attending meetings and asking questions and joining committees. I joined the Curriculum Council, the Superintendent Advisory Council, Meet and Confirm, which is now the District Leadership Team, and from there, I put my hat in the ring, ran for the board, and never looked back. I'm very proud of the accomplishments of this board, having navigated a global pandemic with no playbook, just a whole lot of Zoom meetings, tough decisions, and teamwork. This board and administration worked around the clock, literally, to do everything possible to keep our students and staff safe during that time. During those years, it was really stressful because no matter what decisions were made, people were upset, relationships were tested, but however, with all the chaos making headlines in other districts, our community worked together to navigate and do our best. During my tenure, I'm proud that we have updated our curriculum and established a solid curriculum calendar to review resources, to budget for them, and plans that we will never have decades-old curriculum again. I want to do a shout out to all the parents and teachers who served on those committees, the math, social studies, science, ELA communities back in those early days. I sat in Longfellow and did the work with them as they talked through different resources. It was a lot of work, but I was always impressed by the teachers' passion for the curriculum and what they really needed to make, help kids be successful. Truth be told, the curricular updates is what locked me in to this board in the first place. We also sold a dilapidated 93-year-old building that served no purpose for the kids despite a very vocal minority. Through that sale, this district was able to partner with the village and create this beautiful building. This partnership saved taxpayers millions of dollars and allowed the district to operate more efficiently and help fund capital projects during that time. Previous boards kicked that can down the road, but this board didn't. During this time, I learned the right thing to do isn't always the easiest. The board asked our community to support a $179 million referendum to improve all 13 schools in the district. It passed in November of 2022 with a solid 67.59%. I looked it up. That didn't happen by luck. It took hard work, engagement with every corner of our community, and a shared belief in what's possible for our kids. We also put smart financial guardrails in place like the 35% fund balance policy to keep our district strong and secure for the future. This policy ensures the district has money to cover expenses during those low cash periods. These initiatives set the district up for future success, and I'm proud to have been part of that work. I am most proud how this worked, how, I'm most proud about how this board worked together and modeled what good governance can look like. While I may not have always agreed with every board member's vote, we always worked in good faith with kids at the center of our decision-making. I hope this spirit of collaboration, respect, and family that we've built together continues because I believe it's a very powerful thing, and it should never be taken for granted. I'd like to go on record, and this is, I'd like to go on record as saying, the single greatest thing that the previous board, consisting of Board President Doug Purcell, Vice President Liz Segal, John Miller, Jill Samante, Karat Doshi, Greg Harris, and Darren Hughes, did was hire Dr. Kevin Russell. I wish I could put that one on my board resume, but I can't because it happened a few months before I was elected. This district would be in a whole different place without his steadfast leadership, mentorship, and empathy for his staff and school community, and stop. His leadership style is contagious and has contributed to the positive and collaborative vibe with the community, families, and staff. I can only hope this next board builds on this positive and collaborative juju that we have all created here. My mom always said, leave something better than the way you found it. And based on everything we've all done together the last six years, I believe mission has been accomplished. Finally, I know this has gone on forever, but I want to thank my husband Doug, my daughter Kate, and son Ethan for their love and support the last six years. I know I was on the phone a lot, having missed dinners to take calls or your sporting events for district meetings. Thanks for your patience and understanding so that mom could try something new and give back to the community we live in and explore what public service is all about. I'm forever grateful. I love you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, you have definitely left this in a better place than we found it, so.
1980s moms are.
All right, I would now like to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of our audience to share, oh wait, yes, why don't we do this right now? All right, now, we will move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share comments with the board. Do we have any comment cards in the basket over there? All right, then I'm just gonna welcome anybody that would like to make a public comment. Please state your name and your attendance area and make your public comment.
Hi, Katie Hurkus, DG EEA president in Highland Attendance Area. On behalf of DG EEA, want to first thank Greg for your service, but also we look forward to continuing to work with you, your new role. But we also want to thank Tracy for your dedication, time, and energy. You've brought a level of passion that was unmatched, and you've been a true supporter and advocate of the educators of District 58, and we are grateful for your service personally. I want to thank you for allowing me to teach Kate and Ethan and be part of their educational journey. Thank you for trusting me as a sounding board and always supporting me, no matter what my role or position has been. I admire how you've been involved in this community, how you have taken your interests, your passions, and not, and found a way to productively make not only Puffer and District 58, but Downers Grove is significantly better place than it was when you're, when they started school. So thank you, and we appreciate everything you've done.
Are there any other public comments tonight? Please.
We're not related.
I'm Tracy's sister, Sarah Hagan. This is the first board meeting I've ever attended, listened to, and I have three kids in school. It's because of all of you that take care of our kids, but most importantly, Tracy, who takes care and cares so passionately about what she does. Steve, you said it. She is a taskmaster, but it's because she's got everybody's back. And it's wonderful. She has poured her blood, spirit, tears, everything into this. I can't even imagine what 2020 was like. But she does it every day. She, I have the proud honor of calling her a colleague at work. Glad that I get to keep her. Sorry about that, guys. But everything she does is because it's got the kids in mind and all of you in mind, and she does it with honor and pride. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Then with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Signee die.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried. The meeting is now adjourned. Signee die at 7:34 PM. All right, if there are no objections, it has been a long, it has long been the board's practice to appoint the current board president and board secretary to serve as the president pro tem and the secretary pro tem until elected new officers. This is the reorganization meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, at 7:38 PM at the Downers Grove Civic Center. Melissa, will you please call, roll?
Member Bernard.
Here.
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis.
Here.
Member Hannis.
Here.
Member Olchek.
Here.
Member Thomas.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here. First order of business tonight is to elect a president, to elect a president. So now nominations are now in order for the office of the president.
I'd like to nominate Darren Hughes for president.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, then with that, the nominations are now closed. So we have a motion on the table that Darren Hughes has been nominated to serve as president of the District 58 Board of Education. Melissa, will you please call, roll?
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried. Darren Hughes will now serve as the president of the board. I don't need to formally hand any gavels. The next order of business will be to nominate a vice president. Is there, are there any nominations now for the office of vice president?
I nominate Kirat Doshi for vice president.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, with that, the nomination period is now closed. We have a motion that Kirat Doshi has been nominated to serve as vice president of the District 58 Board of Education. Melissa, will you please call, roll?
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried. Congratulations to Vice President Doshi. All right. Next up, we have to approve the establishment of a board secretary stipend. Is there a motion to approve the establishment of the board secretary stipend at $10,388.94 for the 2025 through 2026 school year and the stipend for the 2026 through 2027 school year to be determined based on the approval pay rate increase for administrators in the 2026, 2027?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right, Melissa, please call, roll.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the establishment of the board secretary stipend at $10,388.94 for the 2025 through 2026 school year and the stipend for the 2026 through 2027 school year to be determined based on the approved pay rate increase for administrators in 2026 through 2027. Next up, we need to appoint a secretary. Is there a motion to appoint Melissa Jervis as secretary of the District 58 Board of Education for a two-year term?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, it should be a small call.
Yeah. Melissa, please call, roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to appoint Melissa Jervis as board secretary for a two-year term. We have to establish a regular meeting date and time and place. Is there a motion to establish the regular meeting date of the Board of Education as the second Monday of each month at 7:00 PM at the Downers Grove Civic Center? The fourth Monday of each month shall be reserved for consideration of items concerning the instructional program or other aspect of the district's operations, which may require more detailed consideration. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Melissa, please call, roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Thomas.
Aye.
Member Bernard.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to establish dates, times, and places for regular meetings of the board. We have a committee, so I have some appointments here. I would like to appoint the Policy Committee. Darren Hughes is chair with Board Member Bernard. Legislative Committee will be Chair Member Ellis with Member Thomas. The District Leadership Team will be Chair, Vice President Doshi with Member Hannis. The Financial Advisory Committee will be, President Hughes is chair and Member Olchek. The additional ones are IAS, we'll do that one later. Our Lend representative will be Member Ellis, and our Health and Wellness Liaison will be Member Bernard, and our Education Foundation representative will be Vice President Doshi. Any conversation or discussion on that? Okay. Our SACID Board Rep and Alternative Rep, is there a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Emily Hannis as representative and Katie Thomas as our alternate representative for the SACID Governing Board?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried to adopt the resolution appointing Member Hannis as representative and Member Thomas as the alternate representative to the SACID Governing Board. All right, this is now an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board. I don't think we have any comment cards, so is there anybody in our audience today that would like to make public comment? Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Was that a second?
Yeah, second.
Second, second.
I thought he changed his mind. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carried. We are now adjourned at 7:45 PM.